November tenth, Tuesday, November tenth, twenty twenty-five, and I call to order this regular meeting of the Richfield School Board. Attending this meetings, board meeting live in the boardroom are board members Rachel Banks-Cupcho, Paula Cole, Ken Liss, Tim Paulus, Kirk Spencer, and on board chaired, whoever I am, Eric Carter. We're joined tonight by A student representative, Tania Brackenridge. Also at the table we have Superintendent Steve Unoski, and Superintendent Unoski's assistant is out ill this evening, it sounds like. Other members of the leadership team are in attendance and may be participating throughout the meeting as well. Bridgefield Public Schools' mission is to inspire and empower each individual to learn, grow, and excel, and we aim to keep that focus at the heart of our discussions this evening. Thanks to all those joining here live and in the boardroom, as we bear, thanks to those of the streaming the meeting or watching it after the fact via YouTube. We appreciate when people bear witness to our meetings where we conduct the necessary official business of the district. Our first item of business this evening is to approve the agenda before us. As approved of the agenda is routine business item. I will briefly pause to see if there are any comments or questions related to the agenda. Hearing and seeing none, is there a motion?
I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Director Banks-Cupcho and a second by Director, whoever you are, Spencer. I think Director Liss would be the wrong one. Any discussion? We'll bring it to a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. The chair votes aye, and we have an approved agenda. So that brings us to the next item on our agenda. It is information proposal. Normally, we will have speakers this evening. Tonight, we do not have anybody signed up to speak. The next opportunity for speaking will be on December first. Now, it's not a normal comment meeting, but it's for our truth and taxation meeting. So comments directed to that can, are open to for signup, and then our normal public comment night will be on December fifteenth. Now over to Superintendent Unoski for the superintendent update.
Alright, and I am frantically trying to take notes on the board meeting at the same time, so I am balancing multiple things and seeing if I can actually chew gum and walk at the same time. It's very challenging. A couple of items, it's actually one combined presentation, and so I'm excited to bring up our team from the Richfield High School, please, Principal Collins, Assistant Principals Valla and Harris, and Activities Director Peterson. Please step up and share with us your wonderful update about college credit opportunities at Richfield High School, and also about activities and athletics. Give me one second so I can toggle over to your presentation.
Chair Carter, members of the board, Dr. Unoski, student board rep, we are grateful to be here tonight to present on college credit opportunities available to Richfield High School students. There are so many opportunities that we're going to discuss tonight, and the data in which our students both access and have success in those opportunities. With the diverse school community, the diverse opportunities that we have for students to access college level credits is important to us, and so we wanted to capture the full picture of that for you in tonight's presentation. This first one is just sort of an overview of the opportunities that are available at Richfield High School. Concurrent enrollment or dual credit opportunities, our college courses taught during high school. Those first two, college and the schools, which tonight you will hear us saying CIS, that is what it means, and post-secondary enrollment options, and we will use PSEO a lot in this presentation, so we wanted to make sure you had what both of those mean. Those two opportunities result in a student getting both a college transcript and a high school transcript with those single courses. We also offer advanced placement, which is an exam-based college credit class taken during high school with that sort of high stakes exam at the end, and the score will result, potentially result in credits at Minnesota colleges, and you, well, actually nationally. And then we have the language proficiency credit through the Minnesota Seal of Bilinguality Program, which we will dive into tonight as well. I am not going to read through all of these, but I do want to elevate, one of the single biggest benefits for students being able to access college level credits is just the tuition costs that are saved for families. When Dr. Valla shares a little bit of the data, we're going to give you a small sample of tuition saving costs over the past three years, just for our college and the schools credits for courses available right here in Richfield High School. The other one is just the, I think, the variety of opportunities have. We have classes that occur right here on our campus in a very supportive way, five days a week, traditional high school credit, that helps students in a traditional schedule with time management and accessing that level of rigor, all the way up to PSEO where students are on college campus and have an adjustment both to their schedule, time management, and what that means to be in a different environment. So having that variety of opportunities aligned to student readiness matters. We also, with being a SEAL of Bilinguality School and giving college credits for students proficiency in language, it shows that we value multilingualism in providing a pathway to potential college credit in that way. So those were some of the benefits that we really wanted to highlight tonight before we jump into the program description and the data.
So CIS is a partnership with the University of Minnesota. Richfield High School teachers become credentialed and trained teaching specialists, and are supported through ongoing, high-quality professional development at the University of Minnesota. Our students are enrolled in CRS courses, earn the grade that they earn in the course that will go on both their RHS transcript and a transcript from the University of Minnesota. Those credits then become highly transferable to colleges and universities around the country, and have to be accepted by colleges and universities within the state of Minnesota system. CIS is a great opportunity for our students to earn college credits in a familiar setting with teachers that they know, stay in our building for other extracurricular activities and other things that are going on, and then provide a seamless bridge for entering university. Here is a list of most of the CIS courses we offer at Richfield High School. Some of these courses are acceptance is, standards are set by the university programs that we partner with on them, and then other are accessible to all of our students. Some of those courses would be college algebra, physics by inquiry, and then creative problem solving, that is a new course. Advanced placement courses follow a line curriculum set by the College Board. Courses in the AP program culminate with a standardized test, also created by the College Board that students take. Scores of three, four, and five may be awarded credit determined by the accepting college where the student is going to school. AP courses are a great opportunity, also a great opportunity for our students. They are widely recognized around the country, they're available in many US high schools, and a great way to build an academic resume for our students. One of the challenges for the AP is that dependence, dependence on that single test score and for potential college credit. And here is a list of our available AP courses.
So we also wanted an opportunity to share with you tonight our outcome data, the culminating effort of all of the teachers and credentialed instructors that have offered these courses, our students' access to the courses and their success in courses, and it is a snapshot of some of the data that we use regularly to just assess how we're doing as a school in providing access to students, number one, and that our demographics in our advanced coursework represents the demographics of our school. So I'm going to go through three different slides related to CIS and AP, and then if you happen to have additional questions or curiosities, we're happy to dig back into the data. Mr. Spencer asked for some additional information, and that's the printed out packets that you see around you. So we'll start out with just enrollment totals from the last two years. This is where we start our journey and curiosity around how students are doing, both accessing rigorous coursework and then their success in it. You'll see in brackets, repeated students. These data points are pulled by course enrollment. So if a student, for example, is taking an AP Bio and also a CIS education count course, they're counted in both of those places. So I'll just draw your attention to students taking at least one AP or CIS course. That's a measure we look at year over year, and we are above fifty percent in that. And then I'll draw your eye down to student success in those courses. So students earning above a C in their transcribed course in CIS, or their AP score being above a three, those are measures that we want to see as far as student success in those courses. And then you'll see the last line, CIS AP credits earned, that's the earning potential for students. On the next slide is our, again, digging deeper into that, the idea of access and success. We certainly want to see our students of color succeeding in the courses. So that's, this is this slide, comparing CIS and AP scores taken by students of color, and then again, those, their success in those courses. We just pulled data for the last two years for you here to show those two comparisons, both CIS and AP. And then the last slide of data, we really wanted to unpack both, yes, students of color as a group, but then ensuring that our demographic representation also represents the students attending Richfield High School. You'll see a little bit of, I'll explain some of these numbers that don't equal up. Because this, because CIS totals and AP totals use federal designation for ethnicity, and RHS students can designate themselves better, in my opinion, or more accurately by choosing two or more races. So what happens when a student were to choose two or more races for their race ethnicity, the federal designation chooses the first, whatever they select first. So that's why you'll see the little discrepancy here between students selecting for us two or more races, and then that's us reporting to the CIS and College Board whatever their first designation is.
Post-secondary enrollment options or PSEO is the next one that we want to review, and that is a program that really eligible high school students, starting their sophomore year, can take college courses at a post-secondary institution. One of the things that has been really lovely about more recently is the number of online options that are happening at PSEO. So students, one of the barriers has been travel or transportation to a college campus for many of our students, and so the online option has really opened up the opportunity to take college level courses for our students. There are eligibility and requirements. It does require an application process in working through registration at the university level or college level, and then reviewing that with their high school counselor. And some of the limitations are limited by space and availability at the university. So we really start talking with students about that option very early in January to make sure that that, there are no barriers to when students select to do that. They have more opportunity open to them, should they choose that as an option. Some of our PSEO enrollment data is in front of you. We have both the part-time post-secondary enrollment options and the full-time there. Mr. Spencer asked for it by grade level, that's also in the packet in front of you, for ten, eleven, and twelve at Richfield High School. You can see our, over the past two years, both our part-time and our full-time post-secondary enrollment options have increased for a total of fifty-nine, in twenty-three, twenty-four, to seventy-one this year, or this last year, sorry. And then as Dr. Valla explained in the last one, it's really important that we look at the demographic groups on the next slide, and their access to this college credit opportunity. So that is available on this slide, both as a total representation of their, the demographic group in, at Richfield High School, and then how that is represented as a part-time or full-time PSEO student.
Another way students can earn college credit is through the Seal of Bilinguality. Students in world languages, students learning English but have a language spoken in their home other than English, and students that are in our DLI program all converge for college credit using the Seal of Bilinguality. So that is, that's a test administered. Students have to show proficiency in the four language domains, listening, reading, speaking, and writing. We partner with Dr. Kasia Willhite on this effort. You will see information for RHS specifically, but we also do have students that are at ARCEP who are earning SEALs of Bilinguality. So the first, first college credit opportunity, the Seal of Bilinguality is staged in three stages. There's two semesters of college credit, three semesters, and then four semesters that a student earning a SEAL is able to request from their enrolling institution. So equivalent to two semesters of college credit, we wanted to be transparent in how each school might award a level-one Spanish class, two, or three, or four credits. So we're just going to share with you this information the way the state of Minnesota awards credit. So for world certificate, world certificate status, there we go, students can request two semesters of college credit, and these are the last three years, both the languages that students have earned proficiency in and the number of awards given. The next slide goes to the gold seal, equivalent to three semesters of college credit in the Minskew system, and it happens to be all in Spanish as languages in the last three years. And then platinum seal is four semesters, and you can see the languages, both languages spoken and number of awards for the last three years. And then that is just giving us a potential credit, semester credit potential that students can request upon enrolling into their university of almost two hundred that we're really proud of from last year. We have two, two groups of testers taking their stamp tests right now as multilingual learners, and all students thus far have earned awards.
The last one we want to talk about is not an automatic college credit, but we have, through our career and technical ed or CTE courses, entered fifteen articulation agreements. This is a very unique opportunity, mostly in the trades, where our CTE courses in, at the high school have what the CTE community kind of calls a handshake agreement. Our CTE teachers attend articulation meetings, and through a process where they work with universities, or I'm sorry, colleges that have CTE majors, trade majors, they review the high school transcript, and they can enter an articulation agreement. And for any student in that course during high school, if they get a B or higher, which is considered a college-level proficiency, and register through a website while in high school, should they go to that university where we have an articulation agreement, they can then request credit be awarded for the work that they did in high school. So it is not an automatic college transcript, but it's a lovely opportunity, particularly in the trades, for students to have college credit earning potential. Fifteen articulation agreements is an amazing number of articulation agreements, and our CTE department is working really hard to both make that more well-known at the high school level and create a process by which all students in those courses register for that opportunity should they have an A or B in high school, and have that potential to know where that articulated agreement is, should they choose that major. We're going to transition here in a minute, but prior to transitioning, I just want to take a minute to communicate that accessibility to college-level rigor and college-level credits is really important for us. We are working and diversifying our program for all students. We're working to diversify course opportunities through student voice. One of the things that we've heard loud and clear in the six years I've been principal here is what other CIS opportunities might there be? And so one of the things that we're working hard on in partnership with the University of Minnesota is continuing to look for opportunities to bring those courses into the high school. One of the new ones we have this year is creative problem solving. Students asked us, we have plenty of math, plenty of science, plenty of social studies, advanced level classes and college opportunities. We don't have a lot of elective opportunities that aren't content-specific. So we continue to explore opportunities to diversify CIS. We also, doing the articulation agreement for the trades, looking at Seal of Bilinguality. It really shows that we value that all students have access to college-level rigor and the opportunity for college credits while in high school. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Valla to talk a little bit about the Student School Board Representative Event that was recently attended.
So I wish Ms. Vanessa were here with us this evening to share our opportunity to attend the MSBA event and collaborate with other school districts that have student board reps. It's the fourth year of this event, and each year the hosts tweak it just a little bit differently So we opened the day by just getting a little bit of education about how school boards govern and that relationship between management and articulating what might be a goal for schools and districts. And then as a board member, how you sit and bridge all of those gaps, putting in student achievement for all at the, at the center. So adults got to collaborate. School board members were there, administrators, superintendents, and those who support school board reps. And then the students got to get together with representatives across the state to grapple with challenges that might be happening in their district and to socialize some learning about how to represent the entire student body as a school board rep. So this was my contribution to our evening, and I will try and do Ms. Vanessa's slides some justice. She, she wanted to just highlight that we shifted between schools that were rural and outstate and also metro schools. So she had an opportunity to, to be in breakout groups with both who we would consider some of our neighbors and also hear from outstate Minnesota, some districts that were trying school board reps for the very first time, and others that had seated board reps for a number of years and how each of the processes worked. She was, you all know her, she's also remarkable at bringing people together. So the minute we sat at the table, she was able to ask curious questions of the people around her and get folks talking before we dived into a workbook and a planned presentation. So she walked away with some ideas about how to continue to hold a space for her classmates and teachers to provide her information as she sits on the board. And she, she really wanted to share with you that she enjoyed the opportunity to go. Questions?
Sorry, so a big thank you, yes, a big thank you to our student rep Vanessa and Dr. Valla for representing us at that event. Do we want to pause right now between our two combined presentations? Or do we want to go through with athletics and activities?
It's like questions.
I understand, I'm asking you. All right, questions it is for the high school team. Chris anxiously awaits his opportunity.
I got one question, well, two actually. How many schools have student reps?
That's a fantastic question. Because all of the schools that have them don't necessarily bring them to this particular event. I'm not sure I can answer that confidently. But in the room, I would say a great estimate would have been around 20 different districts were maybe there with some level of representation. And each thinking about how to either, how to, different processes and listen to other folks for how they seat board reps and how many was the right number. And those were questions we got to share with each other. And then have a, a board members, different board members' perspectives on students and the difference between elected board members and seated students. So it was a great conversation.
Cool. My other question is, what PSA school is the most attended for us? As in Normandale? And is there a lot of, is any feedback from the students themselves as to which program they like the best? Or success, succeed?
The first one, Normandale, I would say is our most popular, but I would have to pull the data to give you any exact numbers. But Normandale is very accessible by location and entrance. And I do not know the program. Lots of students take Generals to get those out of the way, but I am not sure if their specific program preference.
Yeah, okay. I figured it was probably Normandale.
Sorry, vast majority are Normandale. And so the experience that we saw was the favorite classes were ones that, right, my prof said were the best professors. And so I know that our counselors, in general, know who the good professors are on campus. And so that often, they often shepherd students to those classes.
And that helps always.
I had a question about the, the CTE courses. So the 15 articulation agreements, does that mean 15 schools or 15 classes?
15 high school classes. Some of them have more than one institution that accept the articulation agreement. And in the link that is available in the PowerPoint, it goes, it dives into the information on the articulation agreement and what schools are available.
And then one of, some of the questions that I asked, I really appreciate you guys kind of scrambling to put together the extra data for me. So the, the clarification around potential credits awarded for Seal of Bilinguism, the state of Minnesota says this is how many, essentially, classes. And, and we're calling those credits here. So really, if you take those and multiply it by more or less four credits, that's 750 credits of foreign language that are, that students often get. The other question that I had, just for the sake of the board here, I was curious about what started as kind of an experiment 10 years ago with having all ninth graders take an AP course. I've, I've been curious over the years how that, the goal of that was to expose students to an AP course early, to encourage them to take an AP course later. And I know my own high school experience, there was not a lot of AP courses available and definitely not any as a ninth grader. And so giving kids the confidence to do that. So my question was, are we seeing that confidence and increase in number from AP? So I just did the quick math. When we started the program, there was 209 high school AP classes taken in 2016. That's steadily risen over the years to anywhere from 270 to 380, 390. And so we are seeing, sorry, those numbers, if you just look at 10th, 11th, and 12th, right? So are we getting more kids to, to come back and take more AP classes in 10th, 11th, and 12th grade? And we are seeing those numbers. So I'm happy to see that, those numbers rise.
And the data, that data is specific to AP only. We did not do the increase in our college in the schools and PSEO opportunities as well that have likely increased after the confidence builder that AP for all in ninth grade brings.
And college in the schools, just to be clear, when we made that decision, which seems a long ago at this point, it was to not only expose to AP, but to sort of break down the barrier of college-level classes. I believe we did see the largest transformation actually in CIS classes. We had, we've done multiple presentations where we were having 600 credits earned was the 16, 17 credit earned. And now we are typically averaging 2,000 credits. And then the other biggest transformation has been going from 30% students of color to well over 60% students of color. And so when we go to the U of M, we are the school that is engaging a wide range of diverse students in our advanced college classes. And so that has had the biggest impact in CIS.
Yeah, one of the data components that we didn't share out but is just overwhelming in showing the value of the program. From '21 to '24, Richfield High School students earned 6,102 credits, equalling 3.7 million in U of M tuition. That's significant over three years. '23, '24, at 557 a credit, students saved $1.2 million. We do not have last year's data yet. The University of Minnesota puts out a CIS value statement that we get sometime in the fall. And so we'll, we'll have that data freshened as soon as we receive that from the University of Minnesota as well.
Thank you. One of the other questions I had was related to that Spanish human geography class. So for our ninth graders, that's Spanish and English, taking it in the Spanish language or English language. But that AP test is only offered in English. And so I've always been curious how those students that have to learn the language and the vocabulary in Spanish for that class, how that translates to the vocabulary needed for the English class. And so that's the third page, I think, that was offered to us. And it looks like it's relatively equivalent between the two. And I think that that's, kudos to the instructor. I know that Prof. Vacca has done a lot of work to prepare those students toward the end of the year and has learned through the last few years. So kudos to her for the work that she's done to help those, those students out.
Yeah, the one addition I would make to that, that I would point out is noticeably significant higher percentage of the Spanish students taking it. And so one of the ways we want as many students as possible. And so we also see a really very significant participation rate in the assessment of our Spanish-speaking students. So well done for the professor and well done for the students.
And then I just had one other question, and maybe this is for you, Superintendent Janowski. The PSEO, I believe there's a cost to the high school for students to enroll in PSEO? Is that, or is there a transfer through?
Yes, we do some funding sharing with the higher ed institution. And so not only do we lose the participation of the students on our campus, but we also lose some of the funding that goes over to, to the PSEO organization.
A portion, okay. Thanks for that. So I have, thank you.
Perkins money pays for a lot of the CTE stuff, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
And generally, when we're talking about funding like that, that is above and beyond. I mean, the, the biggest funding component comes from the students in the classroom as part of our overall school funding formula. One of the challenges of our college-level classes can be that we are able to fund our high school at 30 students per class. And the University of Minnesota puts some class-size caps that are below that. And so one of the challenges we often go through as we offer classes is if we're only able to allow 25 students in the class, do we offer it? And we typically do with 25. But then if there are eight kids, or 10 kids, or 12 kids who want it, we have to make some tough decisions at times about what to do with that. And so we try to offer as many classes as we can. But if you average 30 kids in a class and somebody has eight, then somebody should have the equivalent of 52. And so there are tough decisions as we look to maximize the supports to our students in classes, maximize our offerings, while also being fiscally responsible with the classes we offer.
Do these colleges like the U, I think, when I worked there, I think they did. Do they limit the classes which PSEO students can get into?
I'm going to have to lean on the folks at this table. The, the classes people can get into based on GPA class rank?
I'm talking about like if there's five on the list, they can, they'll accept PSEOs for two.
For PSEO or for college at the schools?
PSEO.
For PSEO, there is an application process and often some GPA and readiness requirements that go with the institution that the students are applying to, yes.
Okay. So I just remember when I was teaching low-level anthropology there, three class, two classes had PSEO kids, the other three classes did not. So we only allowed them into, I mean, this was, you know, 30 years ago. So things have probably, hopefully, things have changed. 25 years ago, let's give me a, give me a little more. That's all right.
More questions?
The only other question I had was the question around AP chemistry or advanced sort of chemistry. I know we have honors chemistry right now. And what, the reasoning for not having an AP or CIS chemistry?
So there is no CIS chemistry. There's a list of available CIS courses that the University of Minnesota will support in preparing teachers for. We have a number of CIS and advanced-level courses in science. We have not explored chemistry but maintained honors chemistry. Every year, we work with our departments on what courses they want to offer. And AP will be one that we will continue to revisit with the instructors, having to become trained in teaching that. One of the really nice parts about Advanced Placement is you, students who have a readiness or a skill in chemistry can take the AP course without taking an AP class. But we want to make sure that we, we have teacher readiness to teach at that level of rigor and desire. We also drive our schedule by student choice. And so as students select courses, it's offered based on how they vote and how they register. So we explore every year what our opportunities are to add courses.
Okay, thanks.
Want to say, having been here when we started the human geography in ninth grade, that is so great to see the effect. Because there's also a lot of, in my head, the mystifying college. It's not, I mean, it is different, but you can do hard things. And you can, and so being able to, oh, this is what this is. And I know there's the prerequisites involved. And so seeing the growth and also the increase of students of color enrolling after that, because it's like now they know they came the way, and so they're going to take the others and see what happens. Also want to commend the social studies team, very rigorous CIS courses. I enjoy some of the readings that I see hanging around my house. And they're very, I think they bring a different level of excitement in, in doing it. And so also great to see. So thank you so much for your hard work, rolling this out and making it a reality.
I do have a couple of questions. We talked about credits. How are we helping the students with the transfer process or making sure that they're able to take those credits and bringing them to whatever school they decide to go to?
So with the College and Career Center that we have and our counseling redesign, having a grade-level counselor, there is a lot of work in the individual level, reviewing the high school transcript and the college transcript. We also have our college, our counselors doing a push-in model where they push in and do lessons across senior classrooms on the college application process. And if you have a college transcript, what the process is and sharing that through both the application process and post-acceptance process. So it's really done comprehensively through teaching everybody and then at the individual level through our senior counselor and our career and college counselor.
Good. We talked about the different, you said, in-state and outstate districts were involved in that MSBA get-together. What other districts did we sit with?
We were with, well, we were with Fridley for a time. We were also with folks from Hibbing and Houston. Houston, I think, is, yeah. So getting to experience different ways that board members connect with students and different ways that they were welcomed to the board was a really interesting experience.
That's very cool. And then maybe this is a question for Steve. I don't want to put you on the spot. So the additional questions, were they published with the packet or published online?
They were not, they were added. So one of the things, we asked board members, if you have a significant number of questions that might take some research, please send those in advance. I want to commend, commend board member Spencer for sending those on to the high school. And so the high school worked on that and put that together to hand out. We can certainly look at uploading those additional components into the board packet for future.
I think that'd be great since we were talking about them and kind of were waving around here. So it'd be nice to have them electronically online. Any more questions before we move on to the next section? Okay, then.
Take it away, Mr. Peterson.
All right, athletics and activities. So thanks, the last time we were here as a group was in March. And so we were kind of, kind of picking up from there, where we left off in March. And kind of the first slide is about spring sports participation. So you see information from...
I got it now. So 2023, 2024, and 2025 for our spring sports. So we haven't, didn't have an opportunity to do this last time that we were here. So you can kind of see the trajectory of our spring sports over the last three years. Everything from golf to baseball and our first-year boys volleyball team. So some nice information and data for you there. The, the next slide, again, because you maybe have heard this or had this come up in previous board meetings, some of our spring sports highlights. So these are really state qualifiers and award winners. I, I did throw in the boys volleyball playoff reverse sweep victory in there. So it, it was the one kind of team thing. But we had a number of state qualifiers in boys and girls track and field last spring, synchronized swimming, and our adapted... and field last spring, synchronized swimming, and our adapted bowling team did quite well as well. And then, our Athena and Tom Spooner award winners are listed at the bottom, but didn't have a chance to celebrate those last time, so I wanted to bring those to your attention. And then, fall. So, we do have fall twenty-twenty-five numbers here. So, going back again, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five for our fall sports participation. Again, girls tennis to girls swimming and diving, which I, I didn't get a chance to include it because the event hadn't occurred yet, but we, we had some girls qualify for the state swim meet. That'll be on Friday and Saturday, so I want to congratulate them on that achievement. Again, that was last Saturday that they qualified, so didn't have a chance to get it into the board packet ahead of time. So, our fall season is wrapping up with the girls swimming and dive team at the end of the week, and our winter sports are just getting started. So, that's kind of our, our next slide is kind of looking ahead. So, we have start dates. We kind of have staggered start dates for a number of our winter sports teams, and that's on the left. And then, kind of getting it out there for our spring sports seasons and when those start dates occur, typically in March. So, we're really excited for the, for the rest of the school year. Our winter season is upon us. It's, it's a long, kind of dark season with, you know, coming to work in dark and going home in the dark, but we're really excited for, for what our Spartans are hopefully going to be able to, to do out on the field and the court and in the pool. And then, getting for warmer weather in the spring season and getting back outside and enjoying some of those spring sports and a chance to be out in community in an outdoor atmosphere. And then, the last one, we do have a new ticketing system that will work in addition to our cash ticketing. So, GoFan is a company that does, works with a number of our conference schools, and we have partnered with them to have a way for people to purchase tickets and/or purchase tickets electronically at the door. We really didn't have an at-the-door online payment system. And more and more of our conference and section schools were going to cashless payments. And so, we were encountering actually more visiting fans who were coming to our venues who didn't have cash. And so, we were, we kind of troubleshooted a couple of things that weren't as successful, but we feel like this will be a wonderful opportunity for those who want the convenience of mobile payments to be able to have a mobile payment option. Again, cash is still going to be an option at all of our, at all of our events. I can't guarantee that when we go to other schools and/or section-run events. Those have a tendency to be cashless events as well. So, it's a new, it's a new opportunity for people, definitely a convenience that goes along with it, but not something that our people need to do. They can still pay cash at the door. So, thank you. I know it was fast, but any questions?
Thank you. No, guys, I have all that to apply here on this one.
I've got a couple of questions, maybe just follow-ups for next time that might be helpful, unless you know them off the top of your head. One of the goals that we have as a district is just the high percentage of students that engage in extracurricular activities in general. And so, I'd love to see, I don't know if it's by graduating class or by percent of students per year that are involved in a sport. So, I see in spring, there was about three hundred student athletes and three-twenty-two this fall. So, that's a little over a quarter, I think, of our students that were involved. But I'm curious, like, when the class of twenty-twenty-six graduates, what percent of them were involved in either an extracurricular that's athletics, or maybe even the play or other after-school activities? I'd be curious just to see what that looks like.
Sure. Thank you.
Thanks.
Like, nobody else with questions?
How did you deal with people who didn't have cash when they came to a game?
So, we, we, it's not a ticketing system, but we do have a system that we have here at school called School Pay. And we tried to kind of shoehorn that in as a way for people to make electronic payments. It was cumbersome in that there were four, or five, or six steps that it took to make the payment. So, we really tried to work with people and help them be patient. Sometimes, it got so frustrating, we just said, welcome and enjoy the game. This is frustrating for all of us. And then, School Pay changed or altered, they actually increased the steps from like four to eight. And so, that really kind of necessitated us to find something else.
Did you think about Venmo?
Yeah, we, we thought of a number of options and tying it into our finance department. So, we looked at it from the parent advisory group to looking at conference schools, talking to finance, talking to operations, and trying to figure out kind of the, what would be the best method. And GoFan seemed to be the best option.
I don't think that kids can give them.
Yeah, they can. My daughter has it. She's had it for a number of years.
And keep in mind, all of our students get into our home events for free, and that, that won't change. So, it's really away students. And so, at, I was at the section swim meet on Thursday and Saturday, and it was a hundred percent cashless because the money was going to the State High School League. And to watch kids buy, students buy tickets, they're away fast. To, to see other people struggle, like, it, it was really impressive to see students.
My daughter, I was just texting her. I was like, she goes to Bloomington-Jefferson, and they have GoFan. And she said that the kids love it because kids, that's their world. Like, they are cashless. They know how to use all of this. And they move around to different schools. And a lot of them have it. And so, it's, it works beautifully for them.
Yeah, I agree.
It's us that have to adjust. We just live in their world now.
Yes, yes.
More questions or comments? Then I'll go. Do we have any idea why there's such a big dip in boys tennis? I mean, almost fifty percent?
We, our, our coach does a fair amount of recruiting, and what we have seen is that a personal invitation or word of mouth from a peer is the greatest driver in someone participating. And so, it's not uncommon, especially in our small sports, to have a wave of students go through. And once they graduate, then it kind of creates a little bit of a, of a dip or a downturn in the participation for that sport. And our, again, like I said, our coach works really hard to invite student athletes. I've, I've seen her when she's substituted in other classes. She works aggressively to, hey, you look like a tennis player. I think you would be good for the team. So, it's, it's that, it's, it's kind of like what Mr. Spencer was saying, is like, it's those waves of kids that come through that are friends and really close. And then, once they graduate, it kind of, we kind of ride, we get a little bit of a lull in that, in that wave.
And then, the dip in football, looks like about twenty-five percent?
You know, again, kind of similar, similar thing. I have a couple of theories. One is that some of the suburban attitude of I need to play a single sport is creeping into our community. And that is not what we like to see. That's not what any of our coaches like to see. But we had male athletes in other sports who were choosing to focus on that offseason sport instead of playing baseball. And, or, and baseball is one of them, instead of playing football. So, that, that, that definitely is one. I think football is a difficult sport in that there's a lot that happens physically and with concussions and ankles and ACLs and that kind of stuff. And so, I, I'm not sure that, I think people think hard about playing football and whether it's worth it or not. But kind of the, again, we have a, a coach and players who had low numbers at the beginning, and they dedicated themselves to reaching out. And the numbers got better throughout the season. Our coach does a football camp for youth, and there's sixty to eighty kids per grade level in the younger grades that came out for a football camp. Additionally, our ninth and tenth-grade groups suffered from not having middle school football when they were in middle school. And so, those are our smallest numbers, and that, I think, is another part of it. So, I, you know, I think there's multiple factors, and it's a lot of things to work through. And we're, we're putting in the effort to try to get kids out to play football in all of our sports. We want kids to participate.
And then, that's my question in general. I mean, so then, it looks like girls swimming and diving almost doubled, which, so then, is that back to your drag my friends with me?
Very much. And we're, we're seeing increased, actually increased involvement from our co-op partner, Holy Angels. And so, there, there's just the number of girls that are participating. And you can kind of see it transition from girls synchro-swimming to the girls swim and dive team. But, yeah, by far and away, the, the biggest helper in getting people out is a friend who asks you to, to play or participate.
And then, as I looked at the slides, I didn't see any activities listed for spring or fall. Aren't there any?
So, there are, we have like the, we have the Spring Musical as an activity, but that's not a Minnesota State High School League activity. We debated whether to put in like cheerleading. Our fall play hasn't happened yet. That's a couple of weeks away. And so, yes, there are activities, but we, at this time, we chose not to include them.
I guess I would say, and other board members can speak up on this, but when we talk about it being athletics and activities, for me, saying that we're talking about the spring MSHL, HSL participation, it makes the other one seems less than, right? And so, i- if it's truly athletics and activities, then we should be promoting all of them. So, for me, I'd like to see, and what does our participation look like across those other activities, and show growth ideally, right? Because that's what we want to see.
And there's no doubt that we're promoting all of our activities, and we want students to participate. There's, there's absolutely no doubt about that. And we'll try to include numbers next time.
That would be great. And then, the last question, this is more, I mean, this is by committee, so I'm, so I have more insight, but I want to make sure we're also sharing with the group. Did, and maybe I missed it. As we talked about GoFan, right, there's obviously a cost with it, right? And so, did you want to talk about that, or?
There, there, there is a cost to the, to the user. So, I, I would term it a convenience fee. So, again, no one has to use GoFan to, to enter a game or any of that. All of our fans can pay cash. There is a one-dollar service fee for the convenience of a mobile payment. There is no cost to the district. So, like, our partnership with GoFan doesn't cost us anything. It does, it's that user. And the groups that we talked to, as far as competitive athletics advisory, the decision was made among that group that the cost should go to the user who's using the convenience of the, of the, of the service. So, yes, there's a cost. But again, our, our patrons don't need to use GoFan. They don't, you don't have to to enter the, to the game.
That actually spurred a question of mine. Are we using GoFan for the fall play as well?
We, we are going to try. So, keep in mind, we got GoFan about two weeks ago. So, we're learning a lot as fast as we can, and we will use it for the fall play.
Great.
Any more questions? Okay. Thank you guys for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Brings us to a commendations.
Commendations. So, first, connected to athletics and activities, RPS would like to commend RHS student Signe Lanay for qualifying for the girls' state cross-country championship meet for the second year in a row. So, congratulations to Signe. We are proud of your hard work in representing us at the state. Well done. Then, as we always do, we are acknowledging Employee Appreciation Days. So, November third through seventh, National School Psychology Week. So, we thank them for their support in the social and emotional well-being of our students. November thirteenth is National Community Ed Day, and so, thank you to our community education professionals, supporting our partnership among individuals of all ages and backgrounds in our community. And then, finally, November twenty-first, the Substitute Educators Day. And so, our subs play an essential role, keeping our team on track when staff are absent. So, we thank our subs. Thank you to all.
Thank you, sir. Next brings us to our consent agenda. The next item is, which is, contains a collection or a routine or fairly routine business items that we consent to pass in bulk without individual discussion. I'll pause for a moment to see if there are any questions or requests before we proceed. Hearing and seeing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
I'll second.
A motion by Director Banks Kapcho and a second by Director Paulus. Any discussion? Averted eyes. Sounds like we're good to go. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. The chair votes aye, and we have an approved consent agenda. Brings us right along to old business. First item is Policy 201, Legal Status of School Board, third read.
All right. So, we are recommending Policy 201, Legal Status of the School Board, third read. Changes are mostly in regard to district branding and style guidelines. And so, you can see, realistically, we are just changing some of those titles, some of the branding, and nothing that would be significant since our last meeting. And so, we have this up in front of you for recommended passage tonight.
Seems straightforward. Would anybody would like to?
I'll move the policy as presented.
I'll second it.
Whew. I think that was the closest I've ever seen. But exciting.
I had that as Cole.
But you know what?
He's gonna go the other way just cause, I know, you're the one that I'm just, just giving you my share.
I actually agree because, to a motion by Director Paulus and a second by Director Cole, because Director List was already on the boards. We gotta spread the wealth round. Any discussion? Bring it to a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Chair votes aye, and Policy 201, Legal Status of the School Board is approved. Brings us to Policy 106, Students and Employees with Communicable and Infectious Disease.
Yes. So, we are, again, on a third read, and so, this puts measures into place to control the exposure to possible communicable infectious diseases in RPS, while also making sure to promote and support the rights of those individuals. And so, we have this for a third read. Again, no substantial changes since our last read. It did get reviewed by our Health Services Department, and there are no substantive changes recommended by them. As I scroll through, you'll notice that most are just in regard to branding and styling. And so, we have this also in front of you for recommended passage or review tonight.
I'll move the policy as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Director Paulus and a second by Director Banks Kapcho. Any discussion? Bring it to a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Chair votes aye, and we have an approved Policy 106. Brings us to new business. We have a bunch of fun stuff on our new business list tonight. Our first item is Resolution Canvassing Returns of Votes of School District General Election.
All right. So, in this header, we are asking that the board document and complete the proper procedures for the election that took place on November fourth related to Richfield Public School District. And so, you'll start with a total number of the votes passed. There were one thousand seven hundred and ninety-three votes passed. You have that information in the packet. And then, you also will have a full abstract of all of the votes in there. And so, you can see different areas, different numbers in who they voted for. And so, we are asking you to canvas the number, canvas the votes for the election. And as I am doing this myself and trying to clarify, it would appear... doing this myself and trying to clarify, it would appear that I am also supposed to remind us to share that in canvassing, Haley Tompkins was elected or once upon this action of canvassing the vote, one thousand four hundred and eighteen votes for Haley Tompkins, one thousand three hundred and forty-one votes for Kelmy Dennis, one thousand two hundred and sixty-four votes for Eric Carter. So this would certify the canvassing of the election for Haley Tompkins, Kelmy Dennis, and Eric Carter.
Well, congratulations to the three, the three winners. And I have great respect for the third place role that Mr. Carter has inherited.
I got that when I ran.
I'm glad you guys all.
Ken knows what it means.
Putting that on the record.
Right.
Ken knows.
I appreciate all of you guys.
I've never got third place.
I've only gone third place until now. I may have tied for fourth with as many as three write-in votes. Thank you to everyone who thought enough to, to write my name down.
Was your family a couple of those votes?
No.
Keep getting them out of the house.
No, no. I was the only voter in, in the household this time and I did not vote for myself. I, I, I did that when I withdrew from the election. That was my vote for myself this time.
And as we do discuss this, obviously we will be celebrating the service of Mr. Paulus and Ms. Banks Cupcho, who will no longer be on the school board. That will be, our new board members will be placed on January fifth, but our veteran board members who will be leaving us, we will celebrate them together on December fifteenth on their final board meeting. Boo hoo hoo is agreed.
I, I will, I will say with great appreciation and to kick off my, 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 my full lame duck status, I will move the resolution as presented, with the results as presented.
I will second as the other board member leaving.
I'm glad you guys are so happy. We have a motion by Director Paulus and a second by Director Banks Cupcho. Any discussion, comments, questions?
No, just, just the general comment, appreciation for the people who stepped forward, which does include you, Mr. Carter. And appreciation for the, the folks in the community who came out to vote.
I agree as the person who got the most votes in the last election.
I just knew it wasn't me.
Correct. Fantastic. You guys are the best. Any more discussion? Well, since this is my favorite thing, being a resolution, we will do this with a roll call vote. And we'll start to my left since I'm looking at Director Cole.
Aye.
Director Spencer.
Aye.
Director List.
Aye.
Director Banks Cupcho.
Aye.
Director Paulus.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye and we have a resolution canvassing returns of votes for school district general election is approved. Lot of motion. Brings us now to the resolution authorizing issuance of certificates of election and directing the school district clerk to perform other election-related duties,
including her certification of the election as to the abstract and return of votes cast, the certification of election, and the acceptance of office and oath of election. So we are certifying this election and having Ms. Quam take some actions on behalf of the board to finalize, swear in our newly elected officers. I think all of you have gone through a similar experience and we are moving that forward. So with that, I have that as a recommendation that you take resolution action and certainly I'm open for questions if there are any.
Or if there are no questions, then that would be another motion.
I'll move the item as presented.
I'll second it.
I appreciate you guys. We have a motion by Director Paulus and a second by Director List. Any discussion?
Just that if Mr. Paulus is going off the board, somebody's gonna have to take over the motion status pretty quickly in January. So just as a reminder to us all.
We have two new members.
That's fair.
Creating motions.
Director Paulus often creates motions.
As I'm taking notes, I am noticing how often not only is Mr. Paulus in on the motions, but in the notes formats, Mr. Paulus was making motions a lot in the last one too. Thank you, Mr. Paulus, for doing it for the team.
We're letting him have them.
I know.
I really enjoy my voice in limited, in, in one sentence quantities.
I was gonna say it, capturing while smiling, big grin, smirking, right? It's like.
There is a certain amusement that makes it even better.
Right.
I saw that. Trump got one too.
Okay. Any more discussion about the resolution at hand? If not, bring it to a vote and this time we'll start to the right. Director Paulus.
Aye.
Director Banks Cupcho.
Aye.
Director List.
Aye.
Director Spencer.
Aye.
Director Cole.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye and the resolution authorizing issuance of certificates of election and directing the school district clerk to perform other election-related duties is approved. Hopefully you're all on your own for the next one, which is the Outreach Workers Collective Bargaining Agreement.
I mean, I'm sitting in the role of superintendent. I'm sitting in the role of secretary to the board. I'm sitting in the role of HR. Working hard this evening. So I am proud and excited to share with you an agreement that has been voted on and approved by our outreach worker team and now is in front of the board. Just as a reminder, outreach workers signed authorization cards to partner with SEIU as their exclusive bargaining group. How we began negotiations and worked our way through what is often quite complex. It is quite complex to come to a first agreement with an organized group. So this agreement would cover twenty-four because they began in the twenty-four, twenty-five school year through to the end of this school year, meaning that our award for coming to an agreement with them is this spring, we will go back to the negotiating table and begin for that next contract. When you do a first agreement at this level, often there are additional things that need to be added. And so there are some clarifications that came in around duty days and hours of work. There is clarification on vacation around Juneteenth, around post-retirement health reimbursement reimbursement account, severance pay added in. A lot of the components added into this contract are straight out of the language and agreed upon in many of our other units. And we try to systematize all of that. Because we were already in this year with the agreement, most of the increases went to this year. And so there's an increase in steps by a dollar ninety. In addition, an added step three. We do have some retention incentive for those who were working last year are receiving some additional money because they did not receive that raise last year. Added some components to longevity. And then also similar to some of our other units, increase the district contribution for health insurance and also for VBA. Then with this partnership, we added a wide range of language components, partnering with two eighty-four and clarifying that, clarifying dues, checkoff, and union components that were not part of this group's agreement in the past. Clarified probation period language, aligned their service credit language, added emergency e-learning day language, added seniority, layoff recall, due process, sick leave language, E S S T, discipline, and grievance procedures. And again, all of these components are in a wide range of our contracts. And so this is just bringing this up to speed. This does take additional time and took some additional efforts because it was the first as this group had organized. And so we are proud and excited to move that forward and excited to continue on that strong partnership with our outreach workers. So with that, I have it in front of you today for recommended approval or questions?
Any questions or a motion?
I just want to thank both the team within the district and from the outreach workers side. I, I can only imagine how much work it is to do a first contract like this. Having never done that myself, reading through the contract, there's a lot to it. And so I want to thank both sides for their work on this. And with that, I will move that we accept this contract as presented.
I'll second. And I, I second also what you said because now that this is in place, it'll make further negotiations a lot easier.
Agreed. Or hopefully agreed. Should make it straightforward.
Well, it's true. I mean, there, there have to be a lot of situations that are unique with the first one, right? We, we, it's just some, some quirks of things when you, someone goes from outside of a collectively bargained agreement to inside. There's just some things about legacy and prior performance, things like that, that are, that are challenging to probably to, to incorporate. So great appreciation for the people who work through it and, and I, you know, it, it's one of the things over the years. I mean, going back to my first year on the board, it was, we were asked, why was the group not organized? And that's not a board decision. You know, it's, it's the employees decide if, if they would like to be organized. And so they have subsequently, a number of years later, chosen to do so.
Students.
I say any more questions or comments? Are we good? If not, we'll bring it to a vote, which is not a resolution. So all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. The chair votes aye and the Outreach Workers Collective Bargaining Agreement for twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-six is approved. Brings us to our next item on the agenda is, not agenda, but next item in new business is Policy One Sixteen Equity and Administrative Guideline One Sixteen dot one.
All right. And so this one affirms our commitment to viewing and analyzing our work through a racial and cultural equity lens. Describes our equity-related policies and lays that out in each of our strategic plan area for the district. This actually is part of our Richfield High School Social Studies classes as they prepare for our mock board meeting on November twenty-first. Students will be giving feedback to a selection of our board members. Not sure who has signed up. I believe we typically, well, last year we had three at the table, hoping we have three in the same. And then we will also have additional students and management team members giving feedback to that guideline before we bring it forward. And so just as a reminder of this policy, this is clarifying that we are a safe and supportive school and that our goal is to ensure that everyone can thrive and that our outcomes are not predictable by race, culture, socioeconomic status, language, gender, sexual orientation, ability, religion, migratory status, or any other real or perceived democratic, demographic characteristics. Clarifying definitions, talking about our racial commitments to making sure that we are an anti-racist district, supporting all of our students and supporting all of the beauty that their diversity brings. And that's a shared responsibility of everyone within this district. And so we have this information for us for a first read, to refamiliarize ourselves. And we will have a significant amount of input as we continue to bring this back to the board for second and third reads. So with that, I have it in front of you in case there are any questions or input now. Happy to take input as we move along. And we will see this a couple more times as will a number of our constituents.
Questions, comments?
I'm excited to hear what the students will share with us next Friday. And I'm curious a little bit about, and I don't know, Dr. Janowski, if you've got answers on this, but I'm curious how this is presented in the class and studied in the class. Cause I'm, I guess my, my question is we've got a lot of commitments here and I would, I'd love to hear from students examples of where they see us doing well as a district on these commitments and where they see additional work needs to be done. And, and there's also shared responsibility from students and parents and community members and some examples along the lines of, you know, almost like a report card on how are we doing?
So I don't have an answer for you. However, I was taking notes in my other method this evening. And so what I will commit to doing is tomorrow, I will send this on through high school administration to send on to the social studies team. So one of the things the social study team looks for is questions and how they address it. And so they'll be reviewing this policy. They'll be reading it through. They'll be getting perspectives on it. But I will make sure that we are also asking for, how would they rate us essentially? What, what do they see as our strengths and our areas for opportunity for improvement? So that will get passed on to those leading the conversation.
Did you say that this was going to safe and supportive schools as well?
It will go to safe and supportive schools as well, yes.
Great.
Any other groups?
Not at this time, but we will wait and see how it comes back when it goes to the groups in general.
More questions or comments? If not, we'll see this one again. And that brings us to our last item in new business is donations.
All right. So recommending the Board of Education accept the following donations with gratitude. Richfield High School Music Department received an anonymous donation for one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars for band. And our MS Music Department received an anonymous donation of one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars for a band. So thank you to our anonymous donor, to RHS and RMS Music. Richfield Middle School received a donation of three hundred dollars from Nikki Keen DeWolle for the United Champ, Unified Champions Program. Thank you, Nikki. And the RHS Spartan Food Shelf received a donation of six hundred and ninety dollars from the staff of the City of Richfield. So thank you to our partners at the City of Richfield. We appreciate your generous donations.
Thank you for the donations. Does anybody want to move?
I move that we accept these donations with gratitude and more gratitude.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Director List to accept the donations with gratitude and more gratitude.
I'm even typing that in the notes.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed, please say nay. The chair votes aye and we've accepted the donations with gratitude and more gratitude. Brings us to advanced planning. First item on the agenda, or first item in advanced planning is legislative update.
So it would appear that there could be a change in whether or not the government, the federal government is shut down. And so we have not locally seen school-based fiscal impacts yet. Thank you very much. And so that is one of those components for us to just be aware of that is probably changing. We are going to begin looking at our legislative platform. And so that will be on the agenda in December as we begin that dialogue. That should carry over to our new members. What I would say based on what we know is similar to last year, I know our highest priority would be the compensatory education hold harmless. And so as a reminder, compensatory education is the way that the state of Minnesota identifies and funds students in poverty and schools to support them and their needs. The change in free and reduced lunch form methodology and the resulting free lunch for all has correlated to a one point nine million dollar drop in compensatory education funding. That was held harmless to us last year. That was held harmless to us this year. They are currently looking at different models of funding. And without a hold harmless, we would be looking to lose well over a million dollars to serve our students. And so we will continue to monitor that, but we should anticipate that that will be one of our highest priority legislative platform ideas until there is a long-term fix for that. The rest we will talk about further.
Questions, comments?
I'm sorry, did I say that?
Information and questions from the board? I think I'm gonna bring one up. So I don't, as a board, right, we can't get together at random and talk, right? It's otherwise, we can talk individually, but we can't, as we start to get to a group, we violate Minnesota public, public meeting laws if we don't talk. So in our presentation about activities, I, I don't know if we kind of glossed over it, but I, I do, I'm still kind of stuck in this whole discussion of the fees and the impact to our, to our, to our community, right? I mean, it's, I don't know if I like the convenience fee comment. And I don't know if we want to have a discussion with the board, if we want to make it an agenda item, if we want to take it offline. Or just a quick poll of like, if you guys are interested, if this is something that's valuable to talk about, it's a dollar, right? And yet it's still a dollar. And it's a dollar, so if it's a family of four, right? Now granted, they're gonna have multiple students, but it's still could be a couple of dollars per family, per game, per event.
To be fair, I wasn't clear if it was a dollar per ticket or a dollar per transaction.
Yeah, it sounds like a dollar per transaction.
Okay.
But.
So, so that, that would be better, right? I was unclear. I know that it also, if you get your season passed that way, it is a more significant cost. But again, I guess for me, I don't know, being in a committee, we've gone up and down in participation. As a board member, I've been involved. As a community member, I've been involved for a number of years. It's like me and a couple of other people. So I know that we sent out information for it, but I think this is a bigger impact item, which I don't know if I feel comfortable with such a small group and not addressing it in a larger audience. So I guess I look to you a little bit. I, I raised our information and questions versus a future agenda item. I don't know if we need more information from the activities or if you guys are interested in that, or if you have opinions on it, or we come back to it and it's a gen item.
Daniela, what do you think?
Thank you.
Microphone.
I'm honestly not quite sure. I think kind of going over the clarification of if the fee is a per ticket or per transaction and kind of more going over if the fee. or per transaction and kind of more going over if the fee includes, like, actually for the service of the website versus of if it is a fee from using the website and kind of a credit card or debit card surcharge, like, having that to the community and being like, okay, this is how much you would pay for the ticket in addition to the fees, and the fee goes towards this. I feel like having it broken down and having that available to the community is a better way to kind of communicate that.
Got it. Okay, so a couple of clarifications, because I have gathered some info on this. I believe it is a $1 per credit card transaction fee. So as a reminder, all of our students attending our games get in for free, so that would not be to them. If there is cash, there is no fee in regard to that. People buying a yearly pass, if they were to do that in cash, there would be no transaction fee to that. So all, all the charges go to somebody purchasing typically at the gate using a credit card. I don't know the number of tickets that we sell, so I don't have that data in front of you, in front of me. The options for that, to provide that online opportunity, are for either us as a district to take on the charge of a dollar each per transaction or to charge the consumer who is using that as their method for payment. Those are the two sort of choices. If we are providing GoFan as a ticketing method, and the, many of the schools in the tri-metro and many of our colleague schools are using GoFan as their model. So that would be some of the background. But I think the biggest, and you can certainly correct me if I'm wrong, the biggest question then becomes, do we just take the charge on ourselves? Or do we pass that on to the consumer?
I think if GoFan were the only method of payment we were taking, then this would be a bigger discussion. But because it's another form of payment, I don't see this as an issue at all personally. It's a convenience for people to be able to pay electronically.
I would agree with that, and I've been to other districts where electronic was the only way that you could get in. And then there was a forced fee on everyone coming in and.
For convenience.
For, yeah. It's no longer convenient.
It's no longer convenient when it's the only means, yes.
But some of us, like me, I don't carry cash, like, ever.
Right.
So if there isn't an electronic way to pay, that's inconvenient for me.
Yeah, it's interesting you say that because I'm annoyed if they don't accept cash, but I will never use cash.
I mean, you can have the discussion in January if you'd like, or later. But I agree with the idea that as long as we accept both means and tell people, well, you could pay cash and there's no added fee, or you pay this and there is a $1 fee, at least people have their eyes open or understand the cost of not carrying cash with them. Thanks.
Perfect.
Just one other question, maybe Eric, because I think you've brought this similar up in the past. Is, do we not offer a means for people to get the season pass free and reduced if they're, if they?
So thank you for the segue, because I was just gonna say, we did discuss that as part of this, the ticketing process. Because my question to leadership was, can we go ahead and take the opportunity to apply free and reduced lunch, the free and reduced discount to the passes? And so the discussion we had, and I'm not sure where we landed, was that the, if you were free, then you could get the fall free or winter free, so that season pass free, not necessarily the full-time. And then if you were reduced, then you could get reduced at that same spread, right? And then the thought would be is that it's handled offline. And so for me, it's always a discussion of discretion as well. And so that it would be done with the athletics office, activities office, and then they'd have a card, just like anybody else would, which I think would be amazing. I'm not sure, if we could get an answer, that'd be great.
Question, because I don't have my Quam policy referral person here at the moment. Our fees and season passes are a board policy, and I am looking around to see, correct?
They are policy or procedures, but they're definitely.
But I mean, are they set in a board policy? I'm not knowing this off the top of my head, and I probably should, but.
I'm pretty confident that they are. I'll give me a second.
I think so too. So if what I'm hearing you say is you would like me to bring the policy back faster around fees for activities, then I can look that up. Let me, let me just say this. Am I hearing from board members that if it is just a procedure, you would like us to examine the passes and apply a reduced fee for those buying passes for free and reduced lunch folks? It's less, costs less for people free, costs in between for reduced, and costs whatever price for not. Is that in there?
I guess, I'm not seeing it at a glance, but for me, I'd like to see and hear an answer, and then we could decide.
Got it. Okay, so without the answer, I will come back at our next meeting, and I'll communicate with you in between meetings. But I will come back with information around what do we charge for season passes? And if there is a method by which those are connected, and if not, I can work on that.
That'd be great. And then the guidance from the board is that we are okay with the convenience fee as long as there are multiple payment forms. So thank you.
Yep, appreciate that.
Any more things I was just saying?
Information or questions from the board members? Not board members, but I'll just toss this up. Each of the returning board members have these in front of them because they are events and things that apply to our people who will still be on the board in January. And so there are upcoming flyer for upcoming events with the School Boards Association, and upcoming leadership conference for School Boards Association flyer, and then our beautiful new School Board Member Handbook. And all of these will be given to our new board members also as we do orientation with them between now and our January 5th seating of our new board members.
Fantastic.
Any more information or questions from the board? Suggested or future agenda items?
Karaoke.
I've heard you say that before.
That would be at their goodbye party.
After cookies. Any more future or suggested agenda items? Future meeting dates, I had it written down, and then I lost it, is December 1st and December 15th, because it's right up in front of me. And again, public comment on truth and taxation, and then open public comment on the 15th. With that, there are, that brings us, I'm so confused without this closed session. The final item of business on the agenda is to adjourn, as this item does not require a full board vote. Officially adjourn the meeting at 8:30 on the dot. Thank you.